Hello, I'm Pat Rice, editor of the News Journal. And welcome to the second of a series of candidate debates. This one with the three candidates who are running for the position of county council, District 3 in Volusia County. First, I want to apologize for us starting a little later than we thought we were going to start. The rain, which hit us like a ton of bricks here about five or 10 minutes before start time delayed one of the candidates. And so as a result, we're starting a little late. We're going to get to the debate in a couple minutes. And we're going to go just as long as we would have if we'd have started right at 6:00 PM. But a little background is in order. The News Journal candidate debates in the past have always included a live audience in the room. But we can't do that this year because of the pandemic. So instead, we're holding our debates with the smallest number of people in the room possible, so we can ensure social distancing for the candidates and for everyone else. The rumor used and received a very hard clean about two hours ago. I know because I did the cleaning myself. So I think we're good to go. Through Facebook Live, what we hope to do is replace our live audience with an electronic one. And we plan to post video of this debate and all other debates that we're going to do in the next week on YouTube, so voters can watch them right up to the August 18th election. It's always possible that technology will malfunction on us. If that occurs, I apologize in advance. But even if that happens, we have everybody covered because we have our excellent reporter, Kazmira Harrison, down at the other end of the table. You can't see her, but she's ready to take notes. And she is going to write a story after the debate that will appear online at newsjournalonline.com and also in our print edition. Just a couple more points about format. All the candidates will have an opportunity to weigh in on every question. And all candidates will get the same number of questions to answer first. The candidate who receives a question first will have 90 seconds to answer, and then the other candidates will each have 60 seconds to answer. It'll be up to me as moderator to determine if a question needs more discussion than that. Let's go on to the next question. I'm going to introduce each candidate in just a moment with a short bio, and then we'll go right to the questions. And finally, at the end of the debate, each candidate is going to get two minutes for a closing statement. And then we'll be done. So let's get started with an introduction of the candidates. And we're going to do that in alphabetical order. And the first candidate is Gary Conroy. Gary has lived in Volusia County for 32 years. He is married to Augustina.
Yes.
And they have two sons, Nelson and Patrick. He spent 22 years as a police officer for the city of Edgewater. And among other things, received the department's first community service award. More recently, Mr. Conroy has been a member of the Edgewater City Commission. And he also serves on the board of directors of the Southeast Volusia YMCA. Mr. Conroy, welcome to the debate.
Thank you, sir.
Our next candidate is John DeHunt. Mr. DeHunt is a resident of Samsula, where he's lived for about the past five years, and where he dabbles with raising chickens. He was a resident of Port Orange prior to moving to Samsula. He's a teacher with the Volusia County School System. And he has four grown children. He was, at one time, a member of the Edgewater Rotary Club. And more than that, he has coached numerous youth sports teams over the years, including Little League Baseball, soccer, basketball, and girls' softball. Mr. DeHunt, welcome to the debate.
Thank you for having me.
And our final candidate is Danny Robbins. Mr. Robbins has lived in Volusia County since 2004. He joined the Daytona Beach Police Department in 2005 at the age of 19. And during his time with the department, he worked in patrol, motor units. Is that like vehicle patrol?
Motorcycle.
Oh, okay. Motorcycle, slot team, and the crime suppression team. In 2014, Mr. Robbins was forced to retire from law enforcement due to multiple back injuries. He is now the owner of a sporting goods business. And he is also an avid fisherman and often takes his son fishing with him. I know that because when I called him a couple days ago, that's what they were about to do. So, Mr. Robbins, welcome to tonight's debate.
Thank you.
And we're going to get right to the questions. Normally, we flip a coin, but in the interest of time, we're just going to start alphabetically with Mr. Conroy. And so here's the first question to you, Mr. Conroy. And it's somewhat specific to District 3. One of Volusia County's big economic development opportunities is in Southeast Volusia County, which is relatively near Cape Canaveral, which is where the space industry is currently growing by leaps and bounds. What should Volusia County be doing to attract some of that industry to District 3?
Well, as I see, the plan is they want to build a space pad or spaceport right in Shiloh. But there's a lot of problems with that. Because when you talk to the people on both sides, if that's what you have to do, you have to listen to both sides, who wants it, who doesn't want it, for the reasons. One other thing concerning to me is that if they want to build a new spaceport or pad in Shiloh, one, that's in the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge. There could be a catastrophic failure of a rocket there. So when you think about that, they have to have a safety zone. Now, the people I've been talking to, that safety zone, if they built it in Shiloh, that safety zone would extend to past US 1, past 95. And also, the citizens of the city of Oak Hill would be in that safety zone. So I don't know why. We'll have to sit down and listen to them, why they want to put it there. Of course, I'm going to listen to them, let them pitch their story why. But I'm very concerned, one, of citizens that would be in a safety zone of a catastrophic failure of a rocket. I don't like that at all. But maybe they have some kind of different thinking. And then certainly the wildlife refuge. Now, Kennedy Space Center sits on 140,000 acres. They're using the pad that they shot off the shuttle. Why or not they're going to use that? That would be my question. Why not just keep on doing what you're doing? So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. DeHunt, same question to you.
All righty. I think it's a great idea to try to tap off the spaceport business. Where the location of the pad actually is, is up in the air. I agree that it should keep it in Space Center, at the county space center, where it's been done for years. But if we can draw some business out of that, some peripheral supplies to supply the space program, I think it'd be very beneficial. I remember back in 2007, we started a restaurant. There were quite a large number of people that migrated or commuted to work at the space center. When Obama shut the space center down or curtailed it, a lot of people were without a job, and definitely hurt our business down in Edgewater. So there is a lot of talent in Edgewater already, I think, and Oak Hill. That'll come, supply labor for the projects that they want to put together. And I think it'd be very beneficial if they could do that.
All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Robbins, same question to you.
What's interesting about that area, and where Shiloh is, is not only it's within the National Wildlife Refuge, but it's federal. It has a lot to do, and the majority is going to be going with the federal government. It's federal land. Just happens to be in Volusia County. But as Volusia policymaker, potentially in Volusia County, that does have to be taken into consideration. And you have to work well and hand-to-hand with these folks. With that being said, it can bring in Blue Origin, it can bring in SpaceX. And from what I'm seeing, it's for widgets and parts to satellites, not necessarily launchpads. If they did go that direction, I would definitely, as a conservationist, definitely be interested in looking at that. I've read letters from Ducks Unlimited that are concerned about their habitat there. I've read all sorts of literature on that. But it would be a home run. We missed the boat about 10 years ago. But it would be a home run for that area. It would bring better paying jobs. It would spark that area and definitely be a home run for Volusia County.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I follow up to that just for a second?
Yes, just briefly.
Yeah, just to let everybody know that, you know, the vice mayor in City of Edgewater, and we're already having developers come in and contact us, put up spec buildings, just because they know all those ancillary businesses are going to be created there. So I just want to let, we're already getting interest of putting those buildings up.
Okay. All right. To the next question, it's also a development question. And, Mr. DeHunt, it goes to you. So I get a little long-winded on this one. I'll try to be as brief as I can. When I moved to Volusia County a little more than 10 years ago, we were in the throes of a great recession. And nearly everyone I met was anxious to see the county begin growing again. Because growth and development creates jobs. About six years ago, the county began growing again. In recent years, that growth has become explosive in some areas. LPGA Corridor in Daytona Beach is an example. But also down in the southeast along 44 and US 95, or I-95, there's a lot of growth. West Volusia, too. Now, a growing chorus of people is raising concerns about the county's rapid growth. So here's the question. Do you believe Volusia County is growing too rapidly now? And why or why not?
Ah, yes. Everybody wants to move to Florida. We can't shut the door on them. And unfortunately, I believe that growth and construction and development is like one of the main economic drivers for our county. And that's not the greatest development we would want. I believe that construction is a flash in the pan. You have jobs for a period of time that the development is being developed, and after that, it's, they're gone. And they maybe move on to another project. And so many times, these construction crews come from out of town to work on these projects. So I feel construction's kind of a flash in the pan. And we're left with what's got to be taken care of after that. As to whether growth is going too fast, if we have to play catch-up to improve our infrastructure to accommodate all the new growth and all the new residents that have moved in, I would say, yes, we are growing too fast. We need to plan for this development, get the infrastructure in place before it comes in, because otherwise, it's an inconvenience for everybody. I remember when they four-lane Dunlaughton Avenue in Port Orange. It was a two-lane road, and all of a sudden, explosive growth came in there. And it was a quagmire, trying to get one place to another because of four-laying of Dunlaughton. And that's going to happen on Hand Avenue. And growth is, has to be better managed.
All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Robbins, we'll go to you next with that same question.
Is it growing too fast? It's possible, and it's hard to say. And like Mr. DeHunt said, it's hard to just close the doors. This is what drives our economy. This is part of someone's right, and to build a house and do whatever they feel they should, whatever brings them to Volusia County. But the biggest point here is that we have to work together to get on the same page with, between the cities and the counties. If it comes to building codes, if it comes to impact fees, all that should be addressed through consensus building, through boots on the ground and collaboration between each other. And limit, while we're doing that, limit county overreach. We have to give people their spaces, help them out wherever we can, be a resource, be an asset to them. But staying active and engaged in the community, I believe, is definitely going to be crucial to find that answer. But in our interlocal agreements, our reasonable assurance plans, IRL, DEP, FDOT, all that stuff, and those relationships with our state senator, Tom Wright, congressman Mike Walz, it's going to be necessary to make that happen and control that.
All right. Thank you. And, Mr. Conroy, you get a final word on that question.
Yeah, it's, you know what it is? Volusia County, and I know in Southeast Volusia, we're land-rich. That's why people come. Developers are going to come in, and they're going to look at the comp plan. And that's one of the most important things you have to do as a policymaker, because a lot of smart people in a room, citizens' input, politicians, staff, all have the comprehensive land use plan. And you can't deviate from that. Now, in my experience in Edgewater, there are things you don't think of. So, yes, they come in, they want some kind of variance. You understand if it's a common sense one, yeah. But one of the things we do is impact fees. We all know, in 2008, everybody froze their impact fees to try to give some kind of developers a break and tax abatements. So we just, in Edgewater and other municipalities in the county, they just increased their impact fees. So we got to, I think we have to review our impact fees on a more time, like maybe every three years, to keep up. Because impact fees, a developer comes in, he pays that fee. And some of them in Edgewater were like so egregious, like 600, 400%. And I said, you can't do that to a developer. That's not fair. So what we did in Edgewater is we took a three-year kind of a smoothing period to help them. And what that's triggered is simply they're prepaying their impact fees. Because they know incrementally over three years, it's going to go up. So it helped us put some money in the bank for impact fees and the infrastructures we want to do. Thank you.
All right. Sir? Yes.
If we could, while we're talking about impact fees, we really have to pay attention and make sure it's current with inflation. But also, too, we have to, the public has to know where everybody stands. Because back on December 2nd, 2019, there was votes in Edgewater where there was votes for no for updating that same impact fee schedule. And now, the citizens are essentially dealing with impact fees. So getting back to what I said, it's a collaboration, it's working together.
When you talk about Edgewater, though, what are you talking about?
Just a moment. If you could let Mr. Robbins finish, and then I'll give you some time.
No. When votes were taken for and addressing impact fees, there was votes not to update the schedule of impact.
Was I one of those votes?
On December 2nd, 2019.
Was I one of those votes?
If you can answer that, that's fine.
What, are you saying I voted no?
Yeah.
I voted no. But what I did, I voted no for simply this reason, because I just said that some of those, if we, that night, if we voted for that, the impact fees and some of the, would have gone up 600, 400%. And I was against that. I don't think it was fair for developers to overnight increase their impact fees by 400%. So if you listen to me, Dan, I said over three years, that I think it was fair to smooth those figures. And what it has triggered is, that is triggered for prepayment, that the developers are going to come. They know what the prices are going to be, so they're trying to get at a cheaper price. It's actually created revenue.
Okay. I'm going to let either of you bring this up with the next question. But I do want to keep moving, because otherwise, we're not going to get through all of our questions.
I was going to do my two cents.
So, the next question does go to you, Mr. Robbins, sir. So someday, in the not-too-distant future, that massive planned development known as Farmington will begin taking shape in Southeast Volusia County and in Brevard County. It's a massive project. It's tens of thousands of acres and tens of thousands of homes, retail, it's a large, they have a large plan. As Farmington and other development accelerates, I guess what my question is, is what can be done to protect that rural nature of District 3?
It's the reasonable assurance plans, working with your DOT, your DEP, and getting together ultimately on the same page, working with your cities, Edgewater, Oak Hill, the IRL, everything, the two water districts, the five surrounding counties, all of that is going to come into play. We have to do what we have to do for nature. I mean, as a conservationist, this is what I'm about. If it does have to happen, and we all know it can't be stopped, there's land ownerships, right? Excuse me, land ownership rights. There's a lot of moving parts here. But we definitely, definitely, collaboration is going to be key. Team up, if it goes in that direction, team up with Team Volusia, CO Alliance, work together and do it as safely and as efficiently as possible.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Conroy?
Yeah, I'm very involved in the project. I've met with the project managers. Now, I have a little advantage over my opponents here, because I'm involved in the government now. So I've met with those gentlemen. And Mr. Glenn Storch, everybody knows his favorite land use attorney, met out there at Farmington with them, going over the whole project. And believe me, they're great partners. They want to make everybody happy, the city, the citizens. That's one of their priorities, is the work and collaboration. I'm really happy about it. One of the things, though, I'm very, if you didn't know, I just got endorsed by the Sierra Club. And I'm very, very happy about that. And that just comes from me being a scout as a kid. But it all ties into, I'm worried about the aquifer with the growth, right? So Mr. Storch took it upon himself to hire some hydrologists. Said he found there's some more aquifer that St. John's Water Reserve didn't find. So that's very, very interesting. So I'm involved in that project. They're going to have a lot of conservation overlay, at least 30%. It's a beautiful project. My concern is that a couple years ago, they clear-cut down on Maytown Road, and all the wildlife came to Edgewater. We had invasion of the wild hogs in the southern end of my district, and they were tearing up everybody's lawn. So we had Iowa trappers, and people were seeing coyotes. And somebody actually told me they saw a red wolf, which is supposed to be extinct, and Panthers, and on and on and on, that the wildlife have to go somewhere. So I'm happy with Miami Corporation right now, as it stands. It's been many years in the making, and they've been a good partner for the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. DeHunt, same question to you.
How do we maintain the rural atmosphere? We're going to have to have a major plan that everybody agrees to, and has to be county-wide. Has to include the cities. They all have to be on the same page. Because I've noticed what happened in Port Orange, development, it's going to be planned. And it was supposed to be very rural. But they went behind everybody's back and annexed the Port Orange, whole different set of rules. And they just consolidated the development, and there's maximum housing, maximum housing per acre there. To keep rural out of Miami Corporation, they have to have a plan where they control it. Waterways need to be protected. I guess Sierra Club didn't endorse me, because I feel that septic tanks are a viable, very viable way to handle humid waste. And if you keep a rural atmosphere, septic tanks will work very fine. As for the aquifer, as more and more people draw the water, we're going to have to be more and more creative in how the water is used and how we provide the water.
Okay. Mr. Robbins, same question to you.
I think I-
Did you start that question?
He was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a long day.
I knew, I knew at some point that I would, that I would blow it. So thanks for correcting me. All right. So, Mr. Conroy, this question goes to you. And it's all related to sort of the same issue, which is-
It's important.
It's just, it's a major issue for Volusia County right now. So the question is this, at least it seems to be a view of some people, that developers have too much influence in Volusia County. So that's the question, is do developers have too much influence? Why or why not? And as a member of Volusia County Council, if you are elected, what would you do to ensure all citizens are operating on an even playing field?
Well, as we can all answer here, who's taken money from developers? I've not taken any money. I think sometimes people have that idea that if somebody gives you money, now they want something back in return. That's not always the issue. That's not always the problem. They have the right to develop their land. But we have to work in collaboration. You have to follow the comp plan. You don't want a developer coming in saying, yeah, here's the comp plan, then forget that, I want to do something different. So that's what happens.
Remember that, my wife made that.
Okay. We'll frame it for later.
A little sensitive to it. Okay.
So, but we just, if you take money, I mean, that's the connotation, the negative connotation, that if you took money from them, they're going to be calling you up to push it through. I wouldn't take money from a developer just because that, it gives that appearance. Not that I would ever would, but I just don't, because I don't want people to accuse me of that. So these other gentlemen could talk about that, if they took money from developers. But they have rights, too. They have land, they have rights to develop it. But they have to do it within those parameters of the comprehensive land use plan. Simple to say.
All right. Mr. DeHunt, same question.
I guess it'd be easy to say that developers have a big say in what goes on in Volusia County. They're responsible for growth. I feel county government likes growth, because it ensures their jobs, ensures their, you know, ensures their jobs, it keeps them safe. Helps them grow bigger also. How do we control, rein them in? Well, first, I can safely say that I'm not beholden to anybody. All right? I'll listen to everybody, hope to have, receive input from all sides as to how they feel about the issues, and decisions that we've made from that. Everything has to be done responsibly. Like I said, we're going to grow, and we're going to keep on growing. We have to maintain a balance between growth and what lands we have available for farming. We've got to have farming in our area here, and something I want to talk about later. But nobody seems to worry about the food chain being disturbed as past coronavirus.
Mr. Robbins, same question.
Well, since we're on the issue of public trust, Pat, I think the real issue here is not campaign contributions from builders at all. It's quid pro quo. And them, like everyone else, they tend to get behind candidates that they feel do the best for the residents of Volusia County. And tend to support winners, not losers. Although I've never met any of these builders, okay, or staff, or talked to them on the phone, some did donate to my campaign. And like 200-plus other supporters and endorsers of mine, they think I'm the best man for the job. Do we punish our sheriff now, or anybody else that they also donated to? No. Do we, is he a bad sheriff? No. Am I a bad person? No, absolutely not. But the real issue here is quid pro quo. And for the record, like I said, through, there's numerous Facebook posts out there, not only on my endorsement from the sheriff, and you can refer to those on July 2nd, 2020, and July 15th on his. And that should put all this nonsense to rest. But the most important thing is, I've known the sheriff for 17-plus years. I worked my tail off for him for 10. I must be a man of integrity, Pat, or the sheriff and 200 others compared to my opponent that has 26 total, including himself, supporters.
You're talking about donations?
That should be, that should speak volumes.
How much did you take from the developers, Dan?
Just a moment, just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's rules.
Maybe you can tell us, how much you took?
There's rules, Gary.
Okay.
Sit tight.
I got a question for you.
Well, we'll get to, we'll get to that in a moment. You've got about 15 seconds to finish up.
The more important, since we're diving in the weeds here, and the bigger issue is that everybody's ignoring, is that my opponent has openly hired on his campaign reports-
Oh, here we go.
-for his campaign-
Here we go.
Shush.
This is a smear campaign.
Socialist, socialist, and communist.
This guy, forget about it.
And it's documented, and that's the bigger issue. Is that acceptable, Pat, in Volusia County or the United States? Yes or no?
So you do not want to tell how much donations you took?
Just, just a moment.
It's public record.
How much did you take?
Dan, I'm going to ask-
And how about Chip Wood changes his mind about you?
Just a moment.
He didn't, Gary.
He didn't?
Sit tight.
He didn't know he supported you when you took dark money. What are you, you laughing?
Okay. Here's what I'm going to ask, is it's fine if there's some back and forth. I expect that in a debate.
There has to be rules, and they have to be followed, Pat.
I just want everyone to wait till the other person is finished before we go in. So I'm going to switch from what you were just talking about, Danny. I'm going to give you one minute to respond.
Sure, okay.
Go ahead.
So how much did you take, Dan, donations? And you do have another opponent here, remember that?
Absolutely.
How much did you take?
From who?
From developers.
Specifically?
Or anybody that's a developer, how about that?
I don't know.
You don't want to say?
Look down the list. There's seven or so thousand from what the topic that he's insinuating here. But not to mention, nobody wants to mention, I have 25,000 of my own personal money in there, and plus-
I'm talking to, I'm asking the questions now, Dan.
Gary, show a little bit of decency.
I am. I'm asking the questions, so it's my minute, now you're talking to me, so I get that time back.
You don't like my answer, so now you're gonna talk to me-
Because you won't say what the answer is.
This bullying and the snake oil that you sell down in Edgewater is not gonna fly here. Show some respect.
Nope.
Show some respect to him and to all the audience out here.
I'm just asking you a question. How much money are you taking? You can't answer it, it's my minute.
Ask and answer, Gary.
So you're good with dates? So how about the day when Sheriff Chip Wood just came out and said, gee, I didn't know Danny Robbins took dark money from the power brokers?
He didn't know, he didn't know that he took money from them either.
Oh, you know.
So what-
So you wanna talk about a communist? Let's talk about that. This is what you wanna bring up?
Sure, absolutely.
Juvenile?
Cause the public needs to know. And if I would've found out first, I would've said it myself, cause it's wrong.
Friends do it.
Okay.
You have your cop friends do it and try to smear people.
Let me just, let me just to, to ask this one question. If you wanna speak to, to that particular area-
Oh, I do.
Okay, you have one minute, and then we're going on to the next question.
So, I knew this guy. He was the former president of the AFL-CIO in the area. Smart, articulate guy. I needed somebody to help with my calendar. I gave him access to my calendar. All I wanted him to do is help me. If we weren't in COVID, we'd be going to a lot of meetings. So somebody found out, his, his former colleagues, Wendell Delarosa, and another guy that has fake Facebook accounts, Gregarius Bernstein, who was Greg Burns. And he thinks it's funny that he's the smear people. But he don't do it, but he has his friends do it. That's how juvenile these people are. So what happened is, somebody said he's a communist. So I called him up and I asked him. He said, yeah, one time I, I believed in that philosophy. And they wanna make it like this, this big mountain that I thought that theory of philosophy is dead. So who even cares about that? It doesn't work. So he doesn't work for me anymore. So I found out, they continue to push this forward that I'm a socialist and a communist. It's ridiculous. And that's what they, that's what they're grabbing on to.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this, and then we're gonna move on. I never thought I would ask this question at any debate in 2020. Are you a communist?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Let's move on to the next question.
It's ridiculous.
I need ten seconds here, Pat, ten seconds.
What do you wanna ask me now?
I think I'm gonna go to the next question, and if you want to weigh back into this, that's fine with me. But I'd like to-
I could have had it over with. If it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. And everybody needs to pay attention. And police work, if you're a good cop paying attention, we call that a clue.
Listen, I got more night shifts than you even got paychecks, pal.
All right. Let's go to the next question.
I, I just wanna say one more thing about this, Pat. What is despicable what they've done is this gentleman, I don't wanna say his name, they published his home address, where he lives with his family. In this day and age where there's a lot of people running around crazy, that was, that's, that is horrible to do that. Now he's afraid of his welfare. This is his friends doing this. What's that?
It's, it's on public record, on your campaign report, just like it is on CPUSA right here. Campaign manager Josh Leclair, 2020, was campaigning for Volusia County Councilman candidate Gary Conroy. Then he hired Frederick Barr to do his internet site development, another registered communist. And here, Yenifer Mateo, his wife, who conducted Canada interviews with the AFL-CIO that conducted interviews for Gary and I. She's also a communist. That's like putting a fox in a hen house here. How is that? If we're supposed to be, is this political savviness at its best? Give me a break. This is nonsense.
So why don't you call, why don't you call people out, Dan?
And people need to know about it.
So why is your friends doing it?
If I would've found out first, you know what I would've done? Cause it's the right thing to do and has no place in Volusia County.
Okay.
Next question.
Let's go to Mr.-
John, what do you got to say? You've been quiet.
I was just taking it all in.
All right.
I've been researching, buddy.
All right, now, we're gonna go to this question, and I'm gonna, I'm going to say one more time, I don't want people talking over each other. I want people to have an opportunity to answer a question and other people to respond. So please, follow that decor. So here's the question, Mr. DeHunt.
My turn.
We have a CEO Business Alliance, which is a private group of business people who work behind the scenes to attract companies to Volusia County. We have Team Volusia, which is a public private partnership that works collaboratively, collaboratively with the CEO Business Alliance and local governments to attract companies. And then we have economic development departments for individual cities that also do the same. The question I, I have is, are all of these economic development arms, and I think what you have to say is that it's been a real challenge to bring new industry here that has high-paying jobs. So is there a better way? Are all of these economic development efforts working as is? And if not, how could it be improved?
Ah, everybody's trying to get jobs into their community. Every county in the country, every state is doing what they can. And sometimes I wonder if we're just spinning our wheels, stealing one factory from one state and bringing it to our state. And we haven't really accomplished anything. It's no new developments, just swishing stuff around. As for drawing people here, drawing businesses here, I am bothered by the fact that people are going out saying, we need to tax business. We need to tax big business, we need to tax business people. Even the county says, we need to draw in business in order to lighten the load on residential taxes. Well, to a businessman, that sounds like, wow, they want me to come there so they can tax me. You know, let's invite our neighbors over for Denver, tell them to bring the prime rib. Are they gonna show up? No. Are very, I wouldn't suspect they would. I feel that we should draw businesses here. Maybe we should do away with the occupational license tax. It's a, what's the word I'm looking for? It's insignificant. You know, you have twenty dollars for a business license, every year you have to pay it. You don't get nothing for it. We could save money at the county level by wiping out that department. And we can say, instead of paying a business tax, we want you to move your business to our county to serve our residents. Nothing more, nothing less. And let's just make it work that way. And then if people wanna be competitive, get involved with the Better Business Bureau, where at least they'll rate your business, and you have a competitive edge and you have a listing.
Okay. Mr. Robbins, same question to you.
The challenge for jobs, or getting better paying jobs, is we have some of the, the problem is, we have some of the best schools in the nation right here in Volusia County. And after graduate, they're leaving. You know, we need to look at avenues. We need to look at Team Volusia partnering, partnering with them. And the CEO Alliance, it takes money and no money. It takes good contacts. These guys do it day in and day out, and they're very good at it, to draw that in. You know, Embry-Riddle, Bethune-Cookman, Stetson, Daytona State, Palmer, all these schools, they had something to do with it. And the key is getting them to stay. Have to make it appetizing. But, but something I'd like to mention, what government should be doing as well is what are we doing for existing businesses here? Anybody knows that the minute you go to work for yourself, you're making more money. It is a better paying job. You're putting in a lot of hours, but there is, there is light at the end of the tunnel. There, there's good things that, that do come out of it. But loosening up restrictions on current jobs, giving them the tools and the opportunity to grow themselves, to evolve themselves, hire more, hire more local folks and supporting local businesses, and all the hoops that go along with it. But my goal is to, to get and keep people working here in Volusia County, collaborating, finding efficient ways to do that, smart ways, common sense ways to do that. And I want them to be set up for success, not failure. And I feel like that's the government's responsibility.
All right. And same question to you, and you get ninety seconds this time.
So when I was first elected in 2014, I realized that we were not on Team Volusia. Team Volusia is that private-public partnership that's so important today because government just can't do it alone. We have to have these partnerships. So I talked, my council said, you give me twenty-five thousand dollars, you let, set me at the executive board, I'm gonna go in there, I'm gonna sharpen my elbows. And that's what you need, a strong personality, which people can see I do, that I'm gonna go in there and I'm gonna get us something. I got great rapport with Keith Nordham. He's a great guy. He's the director, if you will, the CEO of Team Volusia. And I'm very proud that we landed the Northwest Line and Training College. We were the first ones on the Eastern Seaboard to have a college like that. They teach young men and women, they'd be high-intensity electric linemen. Those jobs start at sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Now, they don't stay here, but they go from Maine to Miami, they get placed. But that campus is in Edgewater. Why? Because I went there. You have to get knock Daytona and Almond Beach out of the way, cause they want everything. So I went in there, we landed it, they invested four million dollars on our community, they doubled their campus now. And that's what you need to do, is seek out partnerships with private and Team Volusia. I think it works great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you.
Yes. Something we need to remember here when we're, we're talking about leadership, and I hate the word "I," 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 "I." There's no "I" in team. It's about working together. And the CEO Alliance actually did have the largest part in that, with collaboration, the CEO of that, of that business. But this is a team effort. And you can't be a hero in your own movie. You have to work together. That is what leadership is. That is what strong leadership is, and that's what Volusia County needs.
Okay. The next, go ahead, mister.
One other thing I'd like to say about taxing businesses. I feel a lot of people don't realize, when you tax a business, all it does is increase the overhead of that business, and they're gonna pass down the cost to the consumer. So when you tax a business, who are you actually taxing? You're taxing the consumer, we the individuals. So it's a hidden tax. Governments love hidden taxes, cause they can't say that they're taxing them directly. But indirectly, you are paying that tax.
Can I respond to Mr. DeHunt for ninety seconds, just a minute?
I'll give you thirty seconds, and then-
Thirty seconds.
And then I gotta keep this moving.
Volusia County sends out their tax bills. When they get that pile of money from businesses and citizens, eighty percent come from homeowners. Only twenty percent comes from businesses. So when you sit there saying, business, business being taxed, you gotta look at the facts and figures, John. And also, at the state level corporation tax, there's about two million corporations in the state of Florida. Ninety-eight percent pay no tax at all. So I don't know where you're coming from when you're saying businesses paying taxes, they only pay twenty percent on the dollar that people pay in property taxes in Volusia County. That's a fact.
Let me, let me go to the next question, and it's to you, Mr. Robbins. So septic systems, and we'll, we'll get around to you eventually, Mr. DeHunt. But septic systems, especially aging septic systems, are a real problem in Volusia County. And that a problem in parts of southeast Volusia County is acute. Because many of those old septic systems are near the lagoon shoreline. It's not just a problem in southeast Volusia. It's a significant problem in west Volusia, and it's a significant problem up in Ormond by the sea. So what would you do if elected to the county council to address septic pollution into the lagoon system? And this question comes from Melissa Lammers.
Perfect. Septic is sore. It's, it's on the radar. It's been talked about. We know that sewers leak phosphorus into the lagoon. It's very costly. We need to take, take advantage and be aggressive and build these relationships so we can seek these grants out, get these grants. Consensus building with the state and local, local cities and counties to get on the same page. We work closely with our reasonable assurance plan between Volusia County, Edgewater, Oak Hill, FDOT, DEP, and IRL Council, which covers five counties and two watered men, two watered men and districts. Work with our congressman and, and senator. But it's all about working together and relationships. I've had and established a lot of these relationships from just dealing with them in my local community out off Timoca Farms Road. But it's, it's getting, getting together, collaboration is key, getting boots on the ground, getting involved, and getting us taken care of. I've been fishing that lagoon for seventeen years, over half my life. I've seen it change. It's a problem, and we need to work on it, and we need to work on it quickly.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Conroy, same question.
Yeah, so in Edgewater, we together, no "I," we wanted to eradicate, we have about four hundred people in the center-east of US1. We were on schedule to eradicate all those. We took a group of about forty or so. And, and the homeowners love it because their houses raise up in appraisal. They're worth more. Because a new septic system costs about ten to twelve thousand dollars. So we, we, everybody paid a third. City paid a third, state paid a third. And we let people imageurize it over twenty years so they could afford it. They got a brand-new road, they got, they got sewer. So we were starting to go in bunches to do that. And the governor at the time, Rick Scott, defunded the whole program. That's when I talk about relationships. We have to have that from the state, the county, the federal. So I'm a proponent of it. I was the one that pushed that agenda, that we need to eradicate, and not only septic systems, but also the brownfields, the plumes from old gas stations and things. That needs to get cleaned up too.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. DeHunt?
I'm afraid I disagree with everybody. Septic systems are the most efficient way to handle human waste. You don't have to worry about bringing piping out to collect it, and then you have to turn it around and bring piping to distribute the affluent. The biggest problem with septic systems is the maintenance of them. If you don't pump out, pump out the septic tank on a regular basis, you're gonna have problems where solids get into the drain field, clog up the drain field, and that's where your problems are gonna start coming in, when the drain field's not operating. I think that new development should incorporate septic systems to minimize the amount of plumbing. When you have collection systems, you have to worry about energy to pump the water back to the central wastewater plant. And a lot of times, these wastewater plants, they have overflows that go into the river anyways. So if we keep it out west, the fluid stays out west to recharge the aquifer. Lost my train of thought.
Half of them.
So the most efficient way to do it is to put it out there. And if they create housing, not densely, but sparse enough to maintain, to have septic tanks, the viability of septic tanks, I think that'd be the way to go.
All right. We're gonna go to the next question, and we have to have at least one coronavirus question. I'm, I'm just gonna go to the next one. If, if you wanna weigh in more on septic, just feel free to in between the other ones.
Sure.
So now that we know how coronavirus is transmitted, the question, this is also from Melissa Lammers, is we have sort of a checkerboard now of rules and regulations that have popped up. Daytona Beach has a mask ordinance, Orange City the land, others don't. You could get to the question of, should the state have a mask ordinance? But the question for right now is, should Volusia County have its own mask ordinance that would at least make it uniform from one place to the next?
I meet every Thursday morning on Zoom meeting with all the Volusia County mayors. Our, our mayor, as you know, took some time off, he had a catastrophic injury. I sat in for him for several months, so he wanted me to continue in that meeting. And that's what I wanted to do, is have everybody have the same message, be on the same page in the county. Because I'm going to Daytona, I'm going to Almond, do I need a mask? I don't need a mask. I just involve in the message of the county that we should back up, wash up, and wear your mask. That's the message we're sending out in Edgewater. I think it'd be good if we're all uniformed in doing that. So we'll be meeting tomorrow morning and talking about that with the mayor's meeting tomorrow. And we might be thinking that. Cause I know Chris Veer in Holly Hill now, is he waited seventeen days for his results, and now he's positive coronavirus. That's unacceptable, waiting seventeen days, so.
Okay. Same question to you, Mr. DeHunt.
Regarding masks, in dense, where we have a lot of people together, I guess it's advisable. If you go shopping, but it's not a cure-all. Because whatever you touch, whatever someone else has touched, they might have it. The whole problem is, we don't, we can't identify who the people are that are carriers that are spreading the disease. So for your own safety, you should maximize your protection. Of course, if you're outside and there's nobody around, you shouldn't need to wear a mask. I'm kinda wondering why they enforced it so heavily on the beach. Was the beach that packed, that they had to require people to wear masks all the time? Cause that's the last place I'd wanna wear a mask, was out on the beach. And just to be safe, you know, and you have to worry about, my situation, I have to worry about my fiancee's parents.[1661.78] They're in their eighties. I do not want to be the one to introduce any bug to their life. So I take the precautions to keep myself clean. Of course, there's no assurance that if something on my clothing that comes off that affects them, you know, that's a risk we're still gonna take. But if we try to minimize the risk, we should.
Okay. Mr. Robin, same question.
Yes, sir. What it comes down to is common sense. We need to pay attention to the experts as best as we can, because nationally, it's all over the place. Use our head. Use what God gave you. Show your people, show your families, show your community respect. If you're sick, stay home. Where does, something to look at here is where do your freedoms end? Where your fear starts? So we have to be respectful of each other at the end of the day. And I know people that have take, excuse me, have been waiting in line to take a test and had left, had filled out all the paperwork and left, and then get a positive test result. That's what we're dealing with here, okay? Comes down to common sense. Use your head. Use what God gave you. This has been going on for a million years. It's very unfortunate. I pray for everybody in health every day to get through this, but we have got to get back to business. We have to look at this in totality and get moving, get our stuff together, and get moving, get back to business.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the next question to you, Mr. Duhon. In November, voters in Volusia County will be able to vote to whether or not to continue two citizen-led programs, Volusia Forever and Echo, both of which are used to preserve historic sites, to purchase land, so that we have adequate green space, those sorts of things. Do you support renewing them? Do you support their passage? Why or why not?
I do support that. I think it's a wonderful thing, what they've done with the bike trail. It goes from the land all the way clear through Edgewater, and I think there's a lake that's ready to go to Titusville from that. People wanna get out and exercise, that's an excellent way of doing that. As for future growth, I think all future growth should incorporate those kind of trails and stuff like that. So to that end, there'll be the minimal need for funds from Echo and the other functions to do that. But keep improving our lifestyle that's already existing here. I think we should consider keeping that funded in order to keep improving the trails, the public spaces available. You know, in Orlando, they've got a tremendous trail along the Canalechi River, I think. That's how you pronounce it. A lot of people use it, bikes. People can bring their dogs. They walk their dogs along there, along some of our, you know, it's a beautiful waterway. You walk along, and it's, you know, you can see the gators, and people are fishing and stuff. No swimming, though. But, so if we could do that along certain areas, you know, we might wanna do that along the beach, put on the major boardwalk in there to make the boardwalk even more accessible to more people. I'm all for those funds.
Okay. Mr. Robin, same question.
Echo is the best twenty dollars I've ever spent. And I'd actually spend more, I have a young son, and we enjoy a lot that they have done for this community, and that program has done for this community. Anything that we can do to preserve our green space, in my opinion, is a home run. It's a grand slam, and ultimately, it's gonna be up to the voters. Anybody with children or grandchildren, anybody, really anywhere here in Volusia County, it's a no-brainer, and we need to do it. I want my son and future generations to experience some of that old Florida, to be able to have areas to go out and enjoy themselves in a safe environment. It's clean. It's first-class. And just see what I've seen and do what I've done, and experience that, and have that love for that and for those programs as I have.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Conroy?
Yeah. Thank you. Without the help of the program brands, Echo, municipalities, you won't see any new parks. You won't see any new access to the river. You won't see those amenities that people, why they moved here. And John mentioned the bike trail. Very proud to say that Edgewater is ahead of the bike trail. And let me tell you about how that, those grants, Echo, works into economic impact. When you have people that come here and they do ecotourism. So we had, last summer, Bike Florida came, over seven hundred bicyclists came to southeast Volusia. Their economic impact was one point four million dollars to our little area. They spent four days. They went on treks. They went on the trail. And I'm very happy to say, because I was on the executive board of the River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization, and passed a motion to another seven miles up to Gobbler's Lodge, which is in Maytown Road. So, and they're working on that now. So it all works in with you wanna go forward in the county, that you wanna do ecotourism, and I think that's what we need to put our energy. So we need those funds.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And the next question goes to you, Mr. Robin.
Sir?
So, and this one's a little bit long-winded, if you bear with me.
I'll write it down.
A little more than a year ago, Volusia County voters defeated a call for a half-cent sales tax to help pay for the county's many infrastructure needs. The voters spoke pretty clearly on that issue. But now the county and its cities are in a position of not having a clear funding source to pay for many looming infrastructure concerns. Those concerns include everything from making necessary fixes in some of our city's oldest neighborhoods, to replacing the two-lane bridge on LPGA, to keeping up with development in west Volusia. It's a fairly significant issue that's looming. What does the county need to do to keep up with those infrastructure needs, and how are they gonna pay for it?
Well, the half-cent sales tax, and I'll say this first, to get out of the way, we need to respect the voters, you know, on that. And increasing of the sales tax should be a last resort, in my opinion. I'm a less-tax, less-red-tape kind of guy. And our gas taxes are already just about maxed out at ten cents a gallon, which can be viewed on chapter 114, article five, underneath the Volusia County Code of Ordinances. This is where communication and factual information and doing your due diligence is crucial. And not many folks know that the sales tax increase proposal was at the request of the cities, and then went to the county to let voters decide. So the voters decide, and then that's where the buck stops, as far as I'm concerned. But when it gets back to paying for the infrastructure, we need to look at certain cash cows with, in my opinion, explore these new green renewable energy resources, where we can alleviate any possible tax burdens on the public. They have, they're doing it all over the country, on the west coast, with turbines in the water, in our own infrastructures that generate power. They generate power for houses. They generate power for streetlights and bring costs down to the resident. We need to start exploring new ideas, collaborating with our state and federal. Attack these grants. Get these grants and do whatever we have to do to avoid paying for this sales tax. But there's plenty of other options. Unfortunately, we don't have enough time.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Conroy, same question.
Yeah, it's probably one of the biggest questions we have here, because I was, I was one of the two, I think, elected officials of Volusia County that voted against that. The county asked everybody to pass a resolution at the municipal level. And when it comes down to it, people are not gonna vote themselves a tax. It's a regressive tax also, but that's a whole nother issue. Grants, they're not gonna be any. The governor is, you know what? He's slashing the budget. He's already slashed every environmental project. We, in Edgewater, have canceled every capital improvement project. I think we're gonna go back to the days. It's gonna be so, your budgets are gonna be so tight. And one thing you don't wanna do is lay off people. We're trying to hold a line in Edgewater where everybody is. It's gonna be a very, probably three to five years, once this virus is gone, we can stop looking at those projects. Right now, they're gonna have to wait. Simply said. People can't, like Dan said, I agree with him. The gas tax is maxed out. We can't put any more gas tax. Federal law doesn't allow that. Where do we get more money? That's the question of the day.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan. I'll let you.
And something we have to, and people have to, John, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. He had raised his hand, and you had, that's why. You go ahead.
Like Gary said, people are not gonna vote themselves a tax increase. I feel that a lot of this infrastructure improvement.
I'm sorry. And I didn't mean to interrupt, but I realize that I skipped past you.
No, you started with, no, you started with Dan. You're listening, and I was the last person.
You go ahead. I'm sorry.
So improvements to the infrastructure, how to pay for them. First of all, some of the infrastructure problems that we have are due to poor scheduling. Being a teacher at the high school level, suddenly we were, had our hours of school changed. We used to start at seven-thirty. And so you had a segment of the population that was driving to school before the major rush hour. They've changed those hours to where we start at eight-thirty now. So we've taken that portion of the population driving earlier in the morning and combined it with everybody else. And actually, we're gonna have more traffic at that peak time. Same thing in the afternoon. So what we need to do is try to stagger industries where they're driving so that it's not coming together at the intersections at the same time. I think the schools should go back to seven-thirty, starting time for high schools. As for financing this stuff, we are right now in a period where money is dirt cheap. And I'm not sure why the county isn't looking at bond issues, but if they could get bonds for a quarter percent interest or half a percent interest, that's free money. Why don't we try to pursue that? And of course, we have to keep an eye on the future as to how we're gonna pay these bonds back and pay them off. But for the immediate term, cheap money is the way to go. When I worked at Disney, Disney went crazy with their projects because they had cheap money available.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Robin, you had one, something to add to that?
Yes, sir. And it's unfortunate, but like I said before, people really need to pay attention here to what's going on right here at the table. In one breath, my opponent says, Gary says, that we cannot tax people, that people won't vote, and says, they don't have to when their own government is doing it for them. Example, this week, at the city Edgewater council meeting, I'll just refer to some of my notes here. My opponent voted to give raises to city employees by adopting a maximum mill rate of six point seven mils, which equates to an eight point four-three tax increase across the board, to the citizens, to the majority. This results in thousands of his own hometown constituents that are already dealing with a nine percent utility bill increase, on top of that green water coming out of their spigots, COVID-19 loss of jobs, and behind mortgage payments. And God knows what else those folks are doing with. On top of a huge jump for taxes, it's a disaster. And we have to, we have to pick a side here. We either wanna raise taxes or we don't. But you can't say one thing and do another, especially within the same.
So I don't understand what, I don't understand what your point was.
Would you like me to respond, Pat?
I want him to respond. I don't understand what your point was.
Okay.
I voted for seven point eight-four, I mean, six point eight-four instead of six point seven, so I can give the employees a two percent raise. That's what you're mad about?
The point is.
Dan, you can look at me and talk to me if you want.
The point is, you chose to give city employees, government employees, a raise, which is a smaller number.
Right.
Rather than looking at the totality for the people that you govern, the thousands and thousands of people that you govern. These people have jobs. How many thousands are fighting to keep a roof over their heads? How many thousands, and you know this firsthand, or hundreds can't pay their electric bill? You just taxed everybody again, another eight point four-three percent on top of their nine percent water and utility.
Let me tell you, when you do govern people, and you do make those decisions, I don't know why you're laughing, because I'm telling you from my heart what you do.
It's unfortunate.
What's unfortunate? But you're laughing?
Just go ahead, Gary.
Because we're dealing with people and their lives.
Absolutely.
Now, those city employees, if this didn't happen, this COVID, they would do four percent raise. They're not gonna get that. They're great employees. They go every day. They do great service to those cities. And I dare anybody to get up there and say, you know what? They don't deserve it, because they do. It would've cost people, on average, forty dollars more a year per household. So if that's gonna break somebody, I don't think it is. Because you know what? City workers are people, too, and they have to feed their families, and they gotta keep a roof over their head. And I don't know why you keep smiling and smirking and laughing, because it's not funny, because those people don't get paid very much money. They're in a poverty level. So what do you got to say to that, Dan?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let.
I'm not slowing down. I'm asking you, what do you gotta say about that?
Why don't you, excuse me? There is rules here, Gary. Show them some respect.
If it'd be okay, I'd like to ask the questions, as opposed to you asking questions of each other. So I'm gonna give you thirty seconds to respond, and then we're gonna go to the next question, which goes to you.
Shoot.
And I don't know how much I have to beat a dead horse here, because the answer's pretty, pretty clear. And there's no dispute that city workers do need to be, get to, but when things have to tighten up, you have to be that turtle. You have to be that leader and look at everything, okay? You can't walk over dollars to pick up nickels here. Good analogy, okay? But we have a small percent, you picked a small percent of people that had jobs, that weren't losing jobs. We opted to give them a raise instead of thinking about thousands, thousands. What are we doing here? There is no argument here, because it's obvious.
I gotta respond, I have to respond to that, sir.
Well, how about?
Because he's not looking at the big picture. When we just, we had a downsized, I'm very proud, Edgewater is the last city in this Volusia County that's all self-service. We don't, we don't contract out anything. And our citizens will pay extra for solid waste. They'll pay extra for water, because they got a great customer service. And believe me, they will beat down the doors of City Hall if we don't take care of our city workers. Because we've had people come to our podium and tell us, give them what they want, because they like the service. And when you start cutting that, that's when people don't like cutting of their service.
Okay. I'm going to the next question. It goes to you, Mr. Conroy.
Thank you. I'm Roy.
So there's one issue that is, has been looming, I think, really for a period of time, for the county council in particular, government in general, but for Volusia County council, which is a matter of trust. So this is a question from Mike Dannas of Daytona Beach, but it applies to District Three as well. What would you do if elected to address the perceived trust deficit Volusia County government has with its residents?
You gotta have, you gotta meet with your residents. I'm the kind of guy, and I was really disappointed when I got elected, twenty fourteen. Nobody calls anybody back. It's just a simple thing. Treat people like you wanna be treated. Now, people called me up today. They called me with a problem with their water bill. I said, I'm coming, put the coffee on, I'm coming over. You're coming over? Politicians have to remember, my constituents' problem is my problem. Now, I've never promised that I could fix your problem, but I'll fight with you. I'll go to staff. I'll go to the county manager, like I do with the city manager. They'll tell you all the time, I'm constantly calling up on behalf. I go over people's houses. I take pictures of a tree that might be leaning over. And I tell people, hey, if there's a little cake waiting, I wouldn't be insulted either, because I like my sweets. So that's what you need to do, is get back to your roots, is why, why did you run? To serve people. Now, Dan and I have a longtime service of people. We're public servants. That's what we do. John's a teacher. That's a public servant. But I was so disappointed that nobody, I was calling people, I had people calling me on the other side of the city. I said, nobody's calling me back. I said, I'm putting the coffee on, I'm coming over. And well, I'll try to fix your problem. I can't know if I can, but I'll try. Simply said.
Mr. Duhon, same question.
What was the question again?
The question is, there is a perception, at least among some people, that county government has lost the trust of the people. So if you were on the county council, what would you do to establish and/or to gain that trust?
I do feel that a lot of people, at least I, have minimal trust for county government. One example is, when I was running the mobile home park, I bought a pickup truck, a dump bed, and did my own trash. I got called by code enforcement because I had a open-framed chassis pickup truck on a property, which is supposedly forbidden in my zoning. It was my garbage truck, you know? It's like, why can't I park it on my property? I'm using it in the park. Fortunately, I was able to beat him, because the law goes further than saying, or any other vehicle that weighs so many tons or so many pounds more. So I was able to get away from it. But just so many times, I feel the county lacks wisdom in how they enforce their laws. You know, I had a mobile home park, like I said. I had a recycling program. So I had certain areas of the park set aside for collecting certain type of stuff that had to be recycled. And I had a couple of washing machines in one place. Well, I'm not gonna run to Yorkey Doliner with one or two washing machines in my truck. I'm gonna wait till I have four or five to make the trip worthwhile. And yet, they cited me for having a junkyard. It's like, you know, if they wanna get you, they'll come out and get you. They need wisdom. They need wisdom to enforce the laws, know what the business is doing, how the business is doing it, and cut some slack. How do I fix that? Well, we need to look at these laws or get rid of these laws. It's amazing. How to fix it? We need to go in and re-educate them, I guess, and try to set things right.
Okay. Mr. Robin, same question.
Well, to the question of public trust, and I can, my answer's yes. And I can safely say that. It's just not here in Volusia County. And I can safely say that, and it's just not here in Volusia County, it's everywhere. But as examples here in Volusia County of why there is little public trust, everything we just talked about, impact fees, half cent sales tax, these endless studies that are conducted, and some past county manager issues. People need to know where their, their money is going, how it's being spent. And they need factual information, they need that accessibility. And as a councilman, I'm, I've made a living in customer service, not only in police work, but in, in the business that I own and run. My goal is accessibility. Anybody knows 24/7, they can call me and, and get this done. But the solution to regain this is accessibility. Boots on the ground, more internal audits, stronger checks and balances, and conversation, not confrontation. Better ways of getting this, this, these facts out and not being kept in the dark. And it's obvious our community wants answers, and it's up to us to give it to them.
Okay. Mr. DeHunt, you get the next question. And by the way, we have time for this question and one more, and then we're going to get to final comments. You guys have gone a little long on some of them, but I don't think anybody's bored yet. So, that's good. So, here's the question. There's a pretty good body of scientific evidence from a variety of different people that indicates that our seas are slowly rising. The rising seas have already impacted areas near the shore in New Smyrna Beach. And in the next 20 years, rising water could have serious implications for Volusia County. With that in mind, what steps should the county be taking now to address that future threat?
Wow, rising seas, they've talked about, they've talked about that a long time. They've predicted it, and they're still going on about it. I keep meaning to get ahold of some of my relatives over in Europe, in Belgium, to find out exactly what the situation is in Holland. They've got their dike system, are rising seas causing a problem? So, if rising seas are a problem, they're going to be the first country to have to deal with it. And I haven't heard anything to that effect as to how they're dealing with the problem. Here in Volusia County, I've read before that the jetties are causing excess sand to be washed away from the beaches. No, we can't get rid of the jetties, they're doing a function there. But if that's the case, are we confusing rising sea levels with sands, the sands of our beaches eroding away? If that's the case, we're going to have to probably spend some money and try to re-nourish the beaches. They've done that to dredge out the, the channel at the inlet. And instead of taking the spoils and making islands with it, they ought to take those spoils and try to rejuvenate the beaches.
Okay. Mr. Robbins, same question.
Rising water, Lord almighty, I wish I would have thought about this before Al Gore did years ago. And this, this theory of that, and you have to think, you know, you hear, oh, the world's going to end, the world's ending. Thing that, that makes sense, or at least to me, is what we need to do, we need to pay attention to the banks. The minute the banks stop lending, and we have tons of oceanfront property here, the minute they stop lending money for beachside development or anywhere near water, we have a problem. Because if you think about, sea level rises a couple feet. This has been happening for millions and gazillions of years. If it rises a couple feet, Florida's gone, we're a sandbar. Georgia, most, east, southeast Georgia, gone. Texas, gone, Louisiana, gone. London, gone. Central America, gone. I can go on and on and on. If that was the case, and this is why it's such a strong debate, is if that was the case, why are the banks still lending money? 30, 40-year loans and all this stuff. Pay attention to the money. Do the best you can to look, look through a lot of the what-ifs. And what if the sun falls out of the sky? But pay attention to the money. In my opinion, it's going to be the best indicator here.
Okay. Mr. Conroy, same question to you.
I think John hit on it pretty good, and he said, what are the places doing? You know, you don't always have to be the smartest guy in the room when there's a problem, but surround yourself with smart people. Now, I know South Florida, what they're doing in Miami, South Miami, is they're raising the streets. Are they just pushing it out a little bit for 10, 20 years? But John had, he touched on it really good. Let's find out what other people are doing in other communities around the country, around the world. And you shouldn't be ashamed ever to plagiarize a good idea. I mean, that's how things are, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But I think as we get together and form some coalition with everybody in Florida and see what they're doing, and back and forth, and go to conferences and just have meetings about what are we going to do? We have to listen to the science. That's what you have to do. But there's a heck of a cost, I would assume, in South Florida, just to raise some of the roads a little bit. So, we have to listen to the science, what's going on. We have to see what other people are doing to address it, and see what's working, and copy that.
All right. We have one final question, and we begin with you, Mr. Robbins, on this one, because you can't have a debate about the county council unless you bring up beach driving. You just have to do it. So, this is a question from a reader, Bill Jennings, and I'm going to read it as he, as he asked it. "It's inevitable that beach driving will be curtailed, if not eliminated, over the coming years, perhaps sooner than later, and sooner than many people think." It'll be either from rising seas, which we had just mentioned, reducing the width and derivability of our beach, or stricter, it'll be from stricter regulations to protect wildlife. "It's very possible that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will not renew Volusia County's permit that allows beach driving when it expires in 2030." So, setting aside the whole issue of beach driving good or is beach driving bad, do you believe that the county should be buying additional parking along A1A right now? Or in New Smyrna Beach, I think it wouldn't be necessarily right along A1A. But finding additional parking for off-beach parking for when that day comes?
In my opinion, absolutely. And I'll say this, I'll get this right out of the way. I really enjoy citizen beach driving. And there are many factors and many moving parts here that we have to deal with, sea level, beach erosion, environmental, you know, sea turtles, parian laws under statute 253, 141, HB 631, existing opportunity zones. Property, in my opinion, is a good contingency. It's a good solid investment. Nobody can disagree with that. When property comes available over there, it's a good contingency in case that permit, God forbid, does not get, does not get renewed. So, losing our beach is, is one of our biggest threats here in Volusia County, even with the exemption for the customary use. So, purchasing property, if we have the funds available, I would definitely put it at the top of the priority list to ensure that beach is still accessible. We owe it to the people. They're do that. We need to do the best we can to navigate, navigate all these moving parts together and work together, and, and try to keep this around for as long as we can.
Okay. And Mr. Conroy, same question.
Well, I have to say, I agree with Dan. I mean, we haven't agreed a lot tonight, but I agree with what he said. It's, it's good sense to buy the land, Plan B. We just talked about rising seas. That's going to affect the driving on the beach. More and more, there's a lot of soft sand. It's just the weather and what's going on with the ecology is just not conducive to let people drive on the beach. And someday, you're not going to be able to. The water's not going to go out as far as it did just because of the sea rise. So, I have to agree with Dan, that I think that's a good plan to do that.
Okay. And Mr. DeHunt?
Wow.
Same question.
I can't wrap my head around the fact that beach driving is going to go away altogether. We just privatize the entire beach then if we do that. I've always felt that sea turtles shouldn't have been an issue, because we have the technology to incubate turtle eggs. We could save every turtle egg, egg that's out there. Put, release the turtles, and there will be no turtle shortage. If beach driving is eliminated altogether, Daytona Beach is done. We're just going to be, no more world famous beach. We're just going to be a beach like anywhere else. I can't wrap my head around that. I already feel that with the limited access they have to the beach now, that is a cause that A1A is such a depressed area. I drove along there before, it used to be a lot of closed-up businesses. Well, those closed-up businesses are gone. They leveled them, now you have open spaces. Well, I guess those open spaces are available to make parking lots where people have access to the beach. It's inconvenient as heck as what we used to have. People are able to truck everything they needed to the beach. Well, we're going to have parking spaces off the beach. We won't have to run trams, so people can carry their stuff to the beach. I don't know, it's, that's mind-blowing to me.
Okay. We have reached the point where everybody got, I don't know if everybody got an equal amount of time, but I think we did have an equal number of questions. And so, it's time for us to, to go to the final part, which is for each of you to have two minutes. And I thought I would just start alphabetically and do it the same way, if that's okay with everybody. So, Mr. Conroy, you have two minutes.
Thank you, sir. Well, folks, when you want to be a candidate at this level, you just can't show up someday and say, I want to be a county councilman. You have to be engaged in the community. And I'm sure in my history, it will tell you that I've been involved in my community second to none, whether it's the YMCA, which is very important. I think that's a tent pole in any community. I've even sat on the Volusia County Advisory Library Board, because I think that's very important to the community. And that's part of infrastructure, to have those amenities for people. And we never touched on mass transit here in Volusia County, how important boat train is for people that get to work and want, don't have a car. All these things make a county good and a good place to live in. You have to pay attention to those. When you get Gary Conroy, you can see I'm a very passionate person, compassionate, and I have a lot of empathy. I've worked at both our food banks in the city of Edgewater, Community Hot Meal Program. I was a volunteer for years at the hospice, where I cooked Sunday nights for patients. Because giving back to the community is so important. I have, I've been very blessed with my career, my family, and my family in 1987, that you have to be part of your community and make it go forward and make it better. One of the things I was very happy in, in the city of Edgewater, our biggest park, a six-acre park, had, had fallen in disrepair and gangs and drugs. And they had done nothing with it. I, with the other council people, got together, we formed a plan, we sold some bonds, John, that we wanted to reinvest in that park. And now, it is a place where families can come back to. We have the biggest splash pads in Volusia County, one for big kids, one for little kids, two dog parks. And we just, that's what you're going to see when you're a community. You have to be engaged with the community. So, I hope I get your vote, and have a good evening, be safe.
Thank you. Mr. DeHunt, you have two minutes.
All right. There's a subject we didn't touch on, that was homelessness and homeless people and lack of affordable housing. For 28 years, I managed, owned and managed a mobile home park. Manufactured housing is the most affordable housing that's out there. What has happened? A lot of mobile home parks have been closed down. Governments bought up parks, closed them. Governments interfered with operations of mobile homes and forced owners to close. And what's the consequence of that? These people, who used to live in these mobile homes are basically on the street. They are the homeless people. How, we're past the point now, how do we get that, get that resolved? Now, we have to worry about homeless people, and we have to give them housing, which is a whole lot more expensive than what it used to be. For 28 years, I managed a mobile home park, I was on-site. I was liaison for people for a lot of things. I helped them out wherever they needed help. I advised them how to repair, make some repairs so they weren't gouged by dishonest people. I can bring that to the county. I want to bring wisdom to the county. I think the county has gone overboard with the homeless, homeless situation. They have caused a lot of the problems that we're dealing with now. Lack of foresight, lack of wisdom. They need to get their minds straight and figure out what's best for the community, not only for now, but only for the future. This beach driving thing, like I said, I feel is going to be detrimental to the city, to the county. And I don't know. It's disappointing. And I hope to be able, if I get elected, to help straighten things out and make the county residents, life for the county residents even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins, you have the final two minutes.
Pat, I'd like to thank you for putting this all together for us and also giving the residents an opportunity to listen in, weigh in, and make their own determination who the potential leader may be. Something very important here, when we're talking about experience, we just can't throw out experience and, and the smoke and the mirrors. And Gary, my opponent, he does have experience. There's no qualms about that, unfortunately, it's just the wrong experience. It's divisive experience. And, and there was time and time and time again where Edgewater has, has been divided. Anything from the city, or the city manager, public has been silenced in a lot of these cases. Very public that, that is being led by, by him. And it has to be positive, positive leadership. We need a leader that has shown conservative spending in their own life, that has made good life decisions, that has made good, great investments, planned for the future, and that is willing to have a conversation and not a confrontation. A leader leads by example. Everybody knows that. And, and everything I have done in my life to this day has prepared me for this position. Many people know I, I don't need to do this position. I want to do it, plain and simple. And I've made some very smart choices along the way, I've made some very good connections. And, and there's a lot of people that have helped me out along the way, and I love them to death for that. That is why I'm, I'm the best candidate for this position as your councilman in District 3. Please, 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 everybody, pay attention, look at the facts, and, and focus, focus on the facts and don't get derailed. I'm fresh, a new, fresh set of eyes. The citizens know I'm going to be here for, for Volusia County. I give my own life 110%, and that's exactly what I'm going to give to Volusia County. Please get out and vote Danny Robbins for County Council, District 3. And God bless Volusia County. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I get the final word? All right.
You've earned it.
We've, this is, that is the end of our debate. Again, I apologize for us starting a little late. The one thing you can't always control is the weather. But thank you. And a reminder that tomorrow, we have another debate, that between candidates for Volusia County Chair. It will start at 6 o'clock, and I hope that you'll tune in. And in the meantime, have a good night.